Some of you, we have seen your faces before. We say, welcome back. Some of you, we have not seen, so welcome. Tonight's um roundtable is a little bit more dear and near to our heart. We have some people that, we have a person who's going to speak tonight. That we consider one of our own also. So Bertha Jackman is one of our, our board members. She's going to come on and do a bu- uh bio of the person speaking. Um, just a little bit of housekeeping for everyone. If you are in a car or if you're walking, if you would turn your camera off and you can listen. Also, everyone's going to be muted. Just like this. Um, if you have the chat. Steve, Jeanie. Okay, it might be from our Is anyone else here? Okay, so now I introduce Bertha Jackman, if you want to take yourself off the mute.
Good evening, everyone. Crystal, I'm going to ask you to I'm hearing a lot of feedback.
Okay, can everyone hear me? If you can kind of shake your hand, raise
Bertha, if you could close one of your screens, that would be helpful.
Bertha, stay on your phone. Turn your computer off, please. Okay, as I was saying, if you have any questions, please put them in the chat and we'll try our best to get to you. Also, you can uh go to our website and you can also leave questions too if we do not get to you tonight. So we are going to go right to Bertha and get right into our program. Take yourself off the mute, please.
Okay, my apologies. Okay, this is better?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, the bio for Daniel Stone. Daniel Stone is an attorney representing the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania through the District Attorney's Office of Perry County, where he handles appellate cases in state and federal court. He graduated from Brooklyn College with a major in history in nineteen seventy-four and received his JD from Dickinson School of Law in nineteen seventy-seven. He is engaged in the private practice of law in central Pennsylvania for forty-three years and served as a special master in divorce in Perry and Dauphin Counties and as a referee in insurance liquidation proceedings upon appointment by the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania. He resides in Harrisburg. Daniel?
And Daniel, you're on mute.
Thank you, Bertha, for that introduction and good evening, everyone. Uh, Steve, could we go to the first slide, please? I'm going to read this for the benefit of people who may just be listening and don't have a screen available. It's brief. This is just by way of introduction to our general subject before we get into the nitty gritty of the uh legal details and management issues and things of that sort. This is a quote from a nineteen seventeen case in one of the courts of Pennsylvania, and it reads as follows. "The resting places of the dead are regarded as sacred. There, memory loves to linger and plant the choicest flowers. There, the sorrowing heart renews the past, rekindles into life the viewless forms of the dead, revises the scene where once they moved and recalls the happy hours of love and friendship. There, parent and child, husband and wife, relatives and friends with broken spirits and crushed hopes, revisit often the spot where they deposited their dead. Who does not feel the fountains of his heart broken up and the warm gushings of emotion when standing over the green sod which covers the departed?" That quote represents a recognition of the moral foundation across all societies of the type of work that, that you and the audience are doing. And I would only add that it's even more so for historically black cemeteries, really the subject of our talk tonight. Because their origins can be murky, their founding organizations defunct, their title to the land either nonexistent or their use disputed by their neighbors or their claim of ownership disputed. There may be access issues. There may be rights claimed against them. So it is with, within this background that we're going to turn to what we can do in Pennsylvania. And my remarks are based upon Pennsylvania law, not the law of any other state because Pennsylvania is where I'm licensed to practice and it's really the only law with which I feel competent to speak. So can we go to the next slide? There is Midland Cemetery, which is going to be uh the example that we're going to use tonight as a teaching tool. Let's go to the next slide. Here are the questions. There are many questions that come up with the ownership maintenance and preservation of historically black cemeteries, but here are five big ones which we hope to cover. So, who owns the cemetery? How do you establish ownership or control over one? Who's officially in charge of it? What are its boundaries and what laws protect the starch cemeteries and the rights of access to it? Let's go to the next slide. So, ownership. Ownership of land, including cemeteries, is usually obtained in evidence by a written deed. And deeds are customarily recorded in the county recorder deeds office, which is open to the public and is searchable there and increasingly online. And just this evening, I checked Dauphin County, my county, and the county where Midland Cemetery is located. All the records from the, essentially the beginning of time in Dauphin County are now accessible online for free. So you don't even have to make a visit to the courthouse anymore. You can go to the uh just Google Dauphin County Recorder of Deeds. It takes you to that site and you can navigate from there. But the, so the question may come up, how do you find a deed? You know one's in there, you don't There were three or four ways where you can do it yourself to do this. There were two in- indexes that you need to know about with respect to deeds. One is the name of the grantor. That's the person or entity that transferred the property to someone else that someone else has named the grantee. So if you don't know where the deed is and you know the name of either party, the full name, grantor or grantee, you can search the appropriate index in the recorder deeds office by that name and it will tell you the book, I'm using the word book even though it could be digital, the book and page where the deed is found. And that's the goal. And if you look on the slide, the, the pictures on the right are pictures of really heavy books on high quality stock that are taken out and slammed down by title abstractors and people searching titles and looking for things. And they've been doing it for decades. So you're, you're free to go in and, and actually handle the stuff. You will find the deed. Now, if you don't know the name of either side, don't know the grantor or the grantee, there are a couple of other things you might also in your county uh building or adjacent building, there'll be a tax office because, as we know, counties collect real estate taxes. And because they collect taxes, they have a map of every property located within the county. And on that map is the deed reference showing you the place of, the, the book and page, the very thing you're searching for of the, of the deeds within that taxing district. The fourth possible source in searching is probably the least likely to yield success but worth a try. And it's another thing you can do yourself, and that is searching the Pennsylvania Department of State's Corporation Bureau Records. If you know the name of an organization that was ever, ever associated with the cemetery and the link to the Corporation Bureau is on the paper, which is now on your website, uh thanks to Steve. So, four ways to try to find it. Now, let's go to the next slide. We're going to focus on Midland. There it is, probably on Veterans Day. And let's go to the next slide. More pictures of Midland and we'll talk about borders and disputes in a minute. We're going to focus now on Midland basically as a case study. Uh, because many of those questions that we identified earlier were present in the Midland case and it's possible that the the, the strategies used in that case may be applicable to a situation you're facing. So by way of background, Midland was established in about seventeen ninety-five as the segregated cemetery for the quote colored, close quote, in Dauphin County. The last burial occurred in about nineteen eighty-six. And the Friends of Midland, which was the organization in which Barbara Barksdale was the moving force, filed its articles of incorporation under the Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation law in June nineteen ninety-three for the express purpose, quote, "to rehabilitate and maintain the historical cemetery known as Midland Cemetery." So in, in, in that situation, we knew the answer to the first question, and who owns it? And we knew the answer to the third question, what official organization was in charge? The problem was Friends of Midland wasn't either. They were neither the owner nor the people officially in charge. And in fact, there had been volunteers even before the Friends of Midland was incorporated who were simply going out and restoring the cemetery as volunteers with no express legal authority, but trying to do the right thing and succeeding. So, so the question became, who was the owner? And who was officially in charge? And the answer was a defunct nonprofit corporation that was called the Midland Cemetery Association that was created in nineteen thirty-five. Or it was the mid, the mid thirties and had a deed made to it as grantee, that deed being to Midland Cemetery, to the Midland Cemetery Association. So there was a nonprofit that was deed of the property. And it's not known exactly how long it effectively operated, but certainly by before the mid nineteen eighties, it had ceased to function. So the question for uh the Friends of Midland was, you know, how do we address getting ownership and control of something that is in the, it be owned by a non-operative but still on the books corporation? And here's what we did. We decided not to try to ask the court to just like change the title or something like that. Because there's a long history of law regarding land ownership. You know, we inherited our common law from England and land ownership is very important. It's the basic of, basis of private property rights. So we didn't do, we didn't try to just change the deed. What we did in simple terms, and this is set forth in the complaint, that's um it's called a complaint, even though we really weren't complaining, we were just asking for something called a declaratory judgment. And what that is, is all it is, is a detailed written request to a court, in this case, the Dauphin County Court, asking it to declare that the Friends of Midland have cer- would have certain rights and the rights we wanted were all the rights and all the responsibilities that the nineteen thirties Midland Cemetery Association had. So we weren't asking to get rid of that old corporation, which, uh, you know, we weren't asking, just give us ownership. We were saying, just give us what they had and we can take over. And the way we persuaded the court to do that, it was really done on documents. No one had to appear attached to our request for declaratory judgment. Attached to the complaint were records of essentially the accomplishment of Friends of Midland and of volunteers before the Friends of Midland formed their own nonprofit. For example, there was recognition by the Pennsylvania State and Historical Commission of Barbara Dark Barksdale's contributions to the preservation of Midland. There was a resolution from the supervisors of the townships, Wataro Township, in which Midland is located, supporting the idea that Friends of Midland, who had in fact been operating as if they were in charge, should now be officially in charge. There was a letter from, which we solicited, from the Pennsylvania Attorney General. That office has jurisdiction over cemeteries through its charitable division because cemeteries are considered charitable organizations. And in their letter, they said, "We've reviewed the request of the Friends of Midland and we have no objection whatsoever to the transfer of the right title and interest that the old Midland Cemetery Association had to, to go to the Friends of Midland." So to make a long story short, that, that's what happened. The, the judge who was hearing the case signed an order and the order, while it said a few more things and the order was also in the, in the, under the uh resources and attachment part of the paper that's online. The order said, "Friends of Midland, you now have all the right title and interest in the Midland Cemetery and all the responsibilities and all the duties that the old uh Midland Cemetery Association had." So, so the Friends of Midland simply stepped into the shoes of a defunct organization and now had the legal recognition that matched the actual things they were doing in fact on the ground. And why was that important? Because without that legal recognition as owner and a century custodian, nobody could enter into a contract, nobody could apply for a grant. Nobody could defend against someone, a neighboring property owner is an example, who would intrude on it or claim a right against it. Basically, you can do a lot of good work as a volunteer, but without some sort of legally recognized ownership and control, you can be stopped. And you have no defense because you had no right to begin with. So it was a very satisfactory outcome. And it was, I have to say, one of the most satisfying things I've done in my, in my legal career was helping, helping that to happen. So, let's go to the next slide. Actually, I'm sorry, you can go back, you can go back to where we are. Let's talk about um borders, I think it was, and something else, the previous slide. Sorry about that. Borders, disputes and access. So boundaries. A border, boundary is just another word for border. So boundary issues, you know, typically with a neighboring property can sometimes be resolved by reference to the deeds that we talked about. Because the deeds contain these detailed description point to point of where the property is. And they'll begin with, you know, beginning at the, the big oak tree with a, you know, with a mark on it, then proceeding south a certain number of feet, you know, and measurement in degrees, and it goes all around the perimeter of the property and it goes all, all around the perimeter of every property in their deeds. So when you read those verbal descriptions, which you now have access to for free, you can see if what you think you've got matches the written description and the deed. And it is the written description and the deed that controls, meaning it's the most important thing. So when there's a dispute, usually let's assume it's a dispute bought with a neighboring property owner and it's dispute might be some over, you know, ten feet of ground. Because they thought, you know, their deed gave them the ten feet and you thought this, you know, the, the deed gave you that ten feet. Or it could be over something called an easement, which is a right to use the other person's property such as for access. You know, easement over means you have the right to travel over to get from point A to point B. You don't own it, but you've got the right to travel over. So there are disputes of that type. If they can't be resolved by looking at the uh descriptions in the deeds, the property descriptions, then uh you probably need to hire a surveyor. This, you know, somebody who's trained in not only examining the chain of title and the deeds that can go back generations, but also going out onto the ground and identifying the markers of the boundaries that are contained in the language and deed. So the survey can really clarify the lines. And the, the only, it's not a problem, but it's also not necessarily the final disposition. Why not? Because the neighbor who may not like the results of the survey says, wait a minute, I'll get my own surveyor. And one would think that two surveyors looking at the same land and the same history and the deeds with the same descriptions would come up with the same conclusion as to where the line is, but they don't necessarily do so. Because sometimes the description's a little ambiguous or, you know, one of the corners is supposed to be marked by one thing and they disagree over what that thing is and it can move things around. So when that happens, at that point, the parties can always resolve their differences. And I should have said this at the beginning. Resolutions by agreement are far and away the best way to resolve disputes. But when sometimes they, you can't make, you can't, the parties won't agree. So in that case, dueling surveyors, you wind up in court because there has to be a third party who decides which surveyor's opinion is really the more reliable or credible. And that's someone in our system is a judge. So I think now we can go on to the next slide. Management issues. So, there are obviously legal issues with management. And here I'm speaking of generally um cemeteries that have an organization, you know, that has a charter or, or, you know, a, a, an incorporation, either profit or nonprofit. And therefore, there's a board of directors and the, you know, the board contracts with people or, uh, or gets volunteers to do things. So, we're assuming that the title is, you know, to, to do this, the authority is clear. Uh, but you can still have problems with management and, and in all kinds of you folks listening are probably much more familiar with those problems than I am. But it's, it's clear, you know, no board is perfect and no, no organization is run perfectly. So there can be disputes as to whether or not the board is doing its job, as to whether they're hiring the right people, as to whether they're spending too much money or not enough money on something that is a priority or the contrary view not a priority. Those things I don't have an answer for. That's experience and knowledge and persuasive abilities that are very broad and beyond in what we can cover in, in this talk. But if you're faced with uh an issue where there's a real threat to the integrity of your organization, but when I say a real threat, I mean not a mere disagreement over, is this the right way to do it? But a question like, is this a legal way to do it? Somebody's proposing something illegal or is a misappropriation of funds that have been entrusted? Those are serious. Uh, or somebody's really challenging a large portion of the ownership in, you know, they're claiming, wait a minute, you don't even own this ground. And it's not just a, you know, a ten-foot fringe of grass. It's more meaningful. In those situations, that is when you, you know, you, you're going to need the legal help to do that if you can't solve it through board action. And a word, just a word about the interplay between the boards of the nonprofit associations or the for-profit associations for that matter and the courts. The courts don't like to get involved in that. They can't get involved in every dispute or difference of opinion regarding what the right, right way to do something is. So until there's something that's really serious of the examples I just gave of that then you're on your own to, to figure out, to straighten it out. And it's a political situation. If you don't like the way the board is running something, run for the board at the next election cycle or support candidates who would do something differently. But you, you're really your own little government when it comes to this. And one of the things I think that it's great to do is to try to keep up with what your legal responsibilities are and what the laws are that we're all bound by. Okay, so let's go to next slide. Legal resources and the courts. Well, that is the Dauphin County Courthouse. That's where the Recorder of Deeds office is. That's where the Midland case was, was um filed and decided. And let's, let's talk about the courts getting involved in the question of access. By access, I mean access to the, the cemetery. So, one thing that is uh linked in the paper is very important, which is that Pennsylvania passed in twenty seventeen, effective February twenty eighteen, a law, an amendment to what's called basically the burial code. And what that law does, and the link to it is also in the materials. It's uh, it's formal name is Act sixty-four of, of uh two thousand seventeen. Act just means an act of the legislature and sixty-four is just a number that's assigned to it. So there's no particular significance. But the link is there and it's uh, it's, it's also, of course, it's public law, publicly available. So, what it does, it's very short. And it, it does two things of great significance to us with, with respect to the question of acts. The first thing it says is declaration of policy. The General Assembly finds and declares as follows. One, an individual has a right to reasonable access for visitation to a burial plot in a cemetery that is owned by a cemetery, cemetery company or person other than a cemetery company or is a private cemetery or a private family cemetery. There's the right of access to basically every cemetery. And two, the Commonwealth, meaning Pennsylvania, has a significant interest in protecting that right. So it's the public policy of the state of Pennsylvania that people have a right to visit cemeteries. It doesn't matter if they're public. It doesn't matter if they're private. It doesn't even matter if it's a private family cemetery. And that, those rights are spelled out in another section, section seven oh three. When you read that, you'll see that the language for each type of cemetery that you can imagine, the, the, the rights language, the rights of visitation is the same. So for example, it reads, "A cemetery company shall grant an individual reasonable ingress and egress to a burial, burial plot in a cemetery owned by a cemetery company for the purpose of visiting the burial plot." And then the next section will be, "Cemeteries not owned by cemetery companies." And so on down the line through private cemeteries and private family cemeteries. It all is followed, all those types are followed by the language, "Shall grant an individual reasonable ingress and egress to a burial plot in the cemetery for the purpose of visiting the burial plot." Now, I looked Now I looked. At a legal data database this afternoon to see if there were any cases, meaning cases filed in the courts. Uh that could be found. Interpreting any of this language. And so far, there aren't any. Meaning no court, no appellate court and not, and no trial court has ever written an opinion. Where some of these terms that are pretty general, you know, are fleshed out. And so. Here's the last thing that comes into play with respect to access, and it's this section. It's again, section seven oh three E, access standards. The cemetery company or the owner of real property. Where a cemetery, private cemetery, private family cemetery or burial plot is located. May designate the frequency, hours and duration of visitation and the route of ingress and egress. So what the, what the legislature said there was, yes, everyone has a right of visitation, but. The cemetery owned. Has the discretion to designate the frequency, the hours, the duration of visitation and the way route of ingress and egress, meaning how you come in and how you go out. So it's even, it's easy to imagine. Somebody who wants to, an owner that wants to dissuade visitors. Making it the hours impractical or the days too few. Or some other way that would appear to comply, but maybe really wouldn't be reasonable. But as we sit here tonight, I can't tell you what would be reasonable. I can only tell you with reasonable certainty that there's a right of visitation to a grave. Throughout Pennsylvania. You can't be barred. The rest is an argument, potential argument over the details of when. Where you go in and how long you can stay. And I'm pretty confident that. If if a cemetery owner blocked access or gave it in such a restricted way that it was impractical to use and a real hardship to the potential visitor. That they would, that a court would enforce the public policy of the Commonwealth, that there is a right. You can't really infringe a right. If you if you can do it with impunity, it's no longer a right. So until we get greater guidance, and it's not, I don't think it's going to come from any sort of regulation, it's going to come from cases. But there aren't any cases. So right now, all we have is the language that is there. So. I would say that the last thing, now we can go to the next slide. This is sort of a summary of what we talked about. What you can do on your own, and the next slide is going to be when you're going to need to spend money. So we now know you can search the corporate records on file with the PA Department of State. You can look up deeds in the county Recorder of Deeds office. You can examine tax maps in the county tax office. Of course, you can inspect the cemetery for physical signs of boundary lines. And you can talk to neighbor property owners and descendants of interred persons about any issues that. Uh come up. Let's go to the next slide. Well, I titled it when to spend money, but real, what I really meant was when you need professional help. So we talked about deeds. Maybe more than you ever wanted to hear about deeds, but there it was. And title searches, which is just the searching the history of deed, because every deed contains a little portion called a recital. And the recital recites who the previous owner was. And then you go back to that deed and it tells you where it's recorded. Then you go back to that earlier deed and that recital says what the predecessor to that was and so on back in time. So most people, uh you can do this on your own. It's it's a little bit of a skill, but learned. But the professionals use titles, professional title searchers. Call, also called title abstractors. And that will give you. To go back as well, go go back in time as as long as the records show or a shorter time that you designate. So it used to be, for example, that a bank would say before granting a mortgage, go back sixty years. In the title of this property that we're going to give a mortgage on. And that was considered for the bank's purposes sufficient investigation that. Everything was okay with the property. Okay, so. That's the title search. And then uh we talked about surveyors. And the last would be when, really when to consult, well, you can consult at any time, but when you're going to have to pay an attorney. Potentially, unless the attorney's pro bono. You're gonna have bound boundary issues that you were not, were not able to solve by agreement. Or boundary or other issues that you were able to solve by agreement. But that I would recommend the agreement be reduced to writing and that the writing be done by a lawyer. Because it's too easy to either leave something out. Putting something in that doesn't belong there usually doesn't cause any harm, but you don't want to do that either. And you want to be very specific. So the language has to be unambiguous. And the greater chance of getting that right language with with a lawyer than without. Especially because the whole point of settling your, whatever the controversy was, was to make it go away. So you don't want to have an agreement where you thought you made it. You thought you made you made it go away, but it turns out that now you're arguing over what the agreement meant. That that's not a good result. And then the last resort, which is going to the court, essentially courts as a last resort. Or if you have to actually file or defend against illegal action, when I say you, I mean on behalf of your cemetery or your cemetery association. Uh so I hope this has been of some help. Um obviously, we can't cover all the potential things that can come up or maybe have come up. It's really been more a matter of identifying issues that you're likely to see and trying to give some guidance and. I can tell you that uh just preparing for this has been a useful education for me. And I hope it's of some value to you. Uh so with that. There were, we'd like to leave some time for questions, and there were a series of questions that were submitted. Uh before we began, and it just give me a moment, and we'll get to those. Yes. So um. I'm going to mention the, just briefly, the name of the person submitting the question so they'll know that their question was received and I read it. And then we'll try to go through quickly because I don't have much time, you know, we we can spend on this. There may be questions in the chat that will be. Uh, you know, we'll go over if we have time. So uh Al Grassi. Of uh Chester Township, the Green Lawn Cemetery, Chester Township asked the question. Actually, a couple of questions, and it dealt with the uh the Green Lawn Cemetery. And it was a corporation formed in nineteen oh seven. And uh it owned, and it was a for-profit corporation and it had, it had a deed to the cemetery. And the question it became, according to Mr. Grassi. Some indication that this corporation was dissolved. When? What was the file date? What are the documents? Where can I find the dissolution file? Currently, I'm trying to contact the PA Department of State, but that's exactly the right place because you'll recall. It's the Department of State is the. Uh of the this, the state agency that within it includes the Corporation Bureau. And that link in the paper uh that's on your website now. Is the link you would go to and you would find not only the charter, but you would find evidence of the dissolution if any. Um then as he follows up with this question, can a defunct for-profit corporation still own the cemetery? If no dissolution file can be found. Uh and the answer is yes. Just because the owner is inactive. Doesn't mean the owner loses title. Again, this is the significance, the incredible and. Significance given to deeds to real estate in the law. You don't lose it through inactivity. It it can be passed down from generation to generation. As long as you've left a blood relative closer than something like a second cust. Uh it or by will, you can will real estate forever. And the fact that you never do a thing with it. Other than pay the taxes and don't lose it in some legally recognized way. You're not divested of ownership just because. Your corporation is uh. This is 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 no longer active or because you're no longer active or even alive. So. I think that covers that question. And this really was the Midland separation, the Midlands uh situation. There was a pre-existing corporation that stopped doing business. And the, as you heard the, you know, in the summary, the way it was handled at least there. The next question. Is from Anastasia Pulos from Anarundel County Cultural Resources Section, Office of Planning and Zoning. Are there successful Pennsylvania legal strategies for addressing abandoned parentheses, unowned cemetery lots? So this question uses the word lots. Which I interpret to me not the whole cemetery, but just a particular lot. And I don't know uh of situations where that would occur, but I I would suggest that. This is the significance of having a a an organization in control of the cemetery. The organization might have rules with respect to unused unused lots. And and even if it did not have rules, it would have a procedure to or can invent. A new procedure to investigate a claim. Wait a minute, this is not being used. What do we do with that? Uh so. I don't think I can give a more certain answer than that. Other than the first place to look would be the your own organization. How do we address the possibility? That there is a lot that is not owned. Um, next question. Uh Stephen Lyons. Of Shiloh AME in Westtown, Westchester, PA. Asked about best practices for helping local governments negotiate acquisition of historic cemeteries. From difficult private property owners refusing to maintain or provide access to these historic spaces. How to apply gentle but firm legal pressure on quote, non-cooperative close quote property owners? Well, thi- this asks for, uh, you know, this is the holy grail of getting to yes. How do we, how do we successfully negotiate with difficult people? And. We know that the back, that we have a backstop now in the Pennsylvania statutes, which is if if there, we know there's going to be a right of access. A right to visitors. And we know that no matter what happens, we're going to be able to rely on the courts to enforce that right in one form. Or or enough. But as to the larger question of uh negotiation with difficult private property owners, I could only offer. Uh, you know, what I understand to be standard negotiating advice, which is be respectful. Acknowledge the other person's position and and understand why they have that position. Set forth your own. In a, in his cordial and non-confrontational way, if you can explain why it's important to your organization. Suggest solutions, ask the other party if they have suggestions for solutions. And. If all that fails, then there there is no way. This is why. Contracts are freely entered into and all these things are a matter of essentially free will. So it's persuasion, it's not force that wins. The courts can apply metaphorically, at least force. They can, they can compel people to do things. But if the person is truly non-cooperative, there's really nothing you can do. It's a question is, how do you determine that what appears to be non-cooperation is really the, you know, the last, their final position? Benjamin Carter asks. Says indirectly, I'm involved in Mount Frisbee AME Cemetery in Union Tatchet, Berks County. What are the rules and regulations around privately owned cemeteries? Well. We didn't specifically say anything about privately owned cemeteries, but we did establish that private or public. There's a right of access. And remember, we just said that the the statute is a little one clear. Because it gives the cemetery owner, which would include the private cemetery. The right to schedule the times, how long he can stay and how you get in and out. So subject to the filling in those blanks. Those are the rules and regulations, at least with respect to access. I don't know what else was. What Mr. Carter was thinking uh beyond access in the question, so I'm just going to move on to the next one. David Burnett. Said easements are access to family cemeteries on private property. Okay, so good question. They've all been good questions. Uh an easement, as we said, is a, just the right of use, the right to either, you know, move over it. Uh maybe you could put something on it, but it's not ownership. It's just the right to go over the neighbor's property for some reason. So a typical reason would be a driveway. Like or or a link between two parcels owned by the same person with the with the third person in between. Let's say the cemetery's in between and the, you've got a same property owner on the right side and on the left side. And he's got, you know, his barn is on the left side and the most direct way for him to get from his house to his barn is to go to the cemetery. Well, the cemetery can grant an easement. It can say, fine, we're going to give you permission and it will be written down and the easement itself could be recorded just like a deed. And that's how it's done. And when all else fails for the person who really needs the access. Could be the other way around. Could be the cemetery needs access over the neighbor's private property. There is a way to do that. Uh there's a stat, there's a remedy to do that. It's it's through the courts and it's called opening a private road. Doesn't mean a road like a highway, just means a path for whatever the purpose is. But it's a hard, it's it's, we need a lawyer for that. And it's it's sometimes hard to get because you have to pretty much show that there really is no other practical way than to force. Your way over the neighbor. So uh that's about. The best I can do on that question. Uh, somebody, I'm sorry, I didn't note down the name on behalf of the Lincoln Cemetery. Uh indicated that, asked a question about it where there were no clear deeds. But. Uh the managers have been stewards for twenty years, you know, can we gain ownership that way? And that's a great question too, because it raises the um legal doctrine of adverse possession. I have to speak very briefly about that. So. We've already talked about getting ownership and evidence of ownership by getting the deed in your name or your cemetery's name. Adverse possession. A lot of people, there's a lot of misinformation about it, but what it is, is a legal doctrine that says after a certain period of time. I can't remember if it's twenty years or twenty-one years, it's in that neighborhood. After a certain unit of, a period of time. If you're essentially squatting or using somebody else's land. For that period of time. Somehow you become the owner, and that's not right, because there's more to it. Owners don't lose their property rights to somebody else just because the somebody else was on there, unless. The period of occupancy by the person who's claiming the right, but who's not the title owner, does not the deed owner, claiming against the deed owner. It has to be consecutive years. It has to be open, really visible. It has to be notorious. I don't know what that means. Not notorious, like a bad guy notorious, but notorious in that it's. It's widely known, I suppose. And and most importantly, the possession by the party. Squatting has to be hostile and hostile in this context means. Hostile to the owner and the owner knows it. So let me simplify it by giving you an example. Uh let's say that whether it's a cemetery or your own house. Somebody said, do you mind if I park my car on your, on this corner of your land? And you say, no problem. And five years go by and ten years go by, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. Different cars have come and gone. There's never been a dispute. In year fifty-one, or maybe year twenty-one, if the period is twenty years. The the parker says, well, now I own that parking spot. No, you don't. Why not? Because the owner gave you consent to do that. That's not hostility. That's cooperation. So you don't gain ownership just by using. You don't gain adverse possession just by using. You gain adverse possession when not only are you used. But it's open, notorious and hostile, and so that the landowner didn't defend his rights. Where the landowner agreed, there's no rights to defend. There's no dispute. He gave it. He gave the use away. Maybe because he wanted to be a good neighbor for whatever reason. But you don't lose something because you're a good person and let somebody else use your property. You lose it when. The adverse party is sort of, I'm using this in your face, I don't care what you say. If you don't then move to eject him and there's a legal procedure for that, you know, get a court involved. Then you're sort of deemed to have lost, you're not deemed that you you've lost it at that point, but it's a rare situation. So that's a long-winded answer to the question of, is twenty years of management enough to gain ownership? So that's a long-winded answer to the question of, is 20 years of management enough to gain ownership? The answer is no. Okay, two more, and I know I'm running late. Teresa Graham, Evergreen Colored Cemetery Coatsville, semis, cemeteries that don't have an owner. Okay. So another really good question and I acknowledged in the, the early remarks that. The creation of these cemeteries, historical black cemeteries were, could have been informal, you know, no documentation. But I would say this. Let's make sure there really is no owner. You may have to go way back in time. And so in other words, have a title abstractor. Find that, you know, find it. Uh, see if there actually is an owner. Check the records of this from the sources we identified. If there's still no owner, I'm, I'm being somewhat speculative here. But I would say if, as in the Midland case, you could establish then a record of its use. And establishing would mean. Putting on, you're getting statements or if necessary testimony from people familiar with the fact that it's been a cemetery for X number of years. That, uh, you know, no one's ever claimed ownership. That we just went and visited the graves of our friends or relatives that were there. We never asked any, there was no one to ask. It was just there and opens to the public. Then you could try to establish, again, maybe in a declaratory judgment action. I don't, I, I can't say this with any certainty. Because a lot of this, there simply is no ready-made roadmap of what to do. But you'd want to establish the history of the place and how it was used and how nobody ever made a claim of ownership. And then maybe the attorney general's office would help you, because this is exactly what their jurisdiction is. It's over cemeteries. And if, if you could persuade them to, uh, file an appropriate legal action, that would be one way. And if you can't persuade them or they say, sorry, we can't do it for whatever reason, you can't force them. Uh, and I'm not meaning to suggest they're not well-intentioned. They are well-intentioned, but sometimes it's just not possible for one reason or another. Well, then you're left with, you know, private, private attorney trying to persuade a court that. Make us the owners, the way Midland was, uh, the fans of Midland were, were made the owners because we're the one who actually did the work. We're the ones who know the ground. We're the ones who've been preserving it and protecting it. And without opposition, meaning nobody's coming out to say, no, wait, don't give it to them. You're likely to succeed because it's the right thing. It recognizes the reality of what was happening on the ground. And there's no opponent. So that's, you know, may, maybe that, maybe that's the way to a successful outcome. And the last one. Is from Robert Williams. And I think I'm going to butcher this pronunciation, but is it Tredafrin Township, Chester County? How should municipal agencies, for example, historical commission, interact with cemetery owners? Dash religious, private. Or orphan. Well, uh, it's a very, it's a general question. It's, it's not clear to me what the interaction would be, but it just sounds like obviously foster cooperative relationships. And it, I think it would depend on what the historical commission is asking, if that's the agency in question or any other agency. But generally speaking, I think you're really going to be dealing more with cemetery custodians and stewards such as yourselves. And neighbors and necessarily, uh, municipal agencies. You know, municipal agencies or police, fire and so forth, but they, they might have an historical commission and it would be a natural fit. In fact, let me lead you with this news. And that is, which you probably know, that within this, this last month, meaning the last two weeks. Congress passed the American African American Burial Grounds Preservation Act. Which is a national recognition of the significance, not so, not just how, you know, there's hollow ground everywhere, as I know you know. But now there's actually a structure within the park service and a funding mechanism. And there'll be a mechanism to identify and preserve these incredibly important sites all over the country. And. Unless there are other questions, I'm happy to try to answer. I don't know what the time constraints are. I would say thank you very much for the opportunity to make this presentation.
I'm not sure if, uh, the meeting has a time constraint, um, but if you're willing to stick around. Dana, we do have a few more questions, um, from the chat. I'm not sure. Should we carry on? I know we're a little over.
Any, I think we should carry on until we run out of time.
Okay. Um, so here's what we have, um. So from Tina Charles, regarding visitation rights, should the owner set policies or post signage with hours of visitation?
Well, the statute does, very good question. The statute doesn't say it, but I don't know how else the owner would inform visitors other than posting it. So it, it seems to be yes, because, you know, he writes a little list and puts it in his closet, but good as it. And how's he going to enforce it? How can he say, wait, they're violating the rules if we don't know what the rules are? So until you see some limitation, you should assume, you know, I would assume, doesn't say I can't go in. Therefore, I'm going in if I want to visit. I mean, you don't want to have a confrontation, obviously with an angry farmer or anybody else, but. Uh, if they have the duty to promulgate rules or the opportunity to do so, they should do so and make it known. And that would, to, to me, a common sense way would be posting.
Okay, thank you. So we have a question from. Uh, Rachel Carey Williams, um, this was from earlier in your presentation. Uh, she asked, what if there is no functioning board?
Yeah. So the question I think assumes that there is an organization, but it has no board.
I think so, yes.
Well. An, an organization without a board, right? It's basically a non-functional organization. So. Uh, if assuming there's a contact person at the organization. I would start there and, you know. Ask that person to give a message to whoever might be responsible that, you know, you have duties. Uh, duties and. And, you know, we're concerned that they're not being, um, carried out. So. Uh, if there, if there's no response there, and again, I would check the corporation bureau to see that in fact, there is an organization at all. Then you're, once again, in a situation of filling a void. If you have a, if you have a slate of people who are willing to assume the duties that aren't being performed. And there's an existing organization, suggest the slate of people be constitute the board and, you know, adopt bylaws. And if you can't do that through cooperation, then, then again. As in Midland, where there's nobody on the other end to even talk to, you, you file some sort of legal action saying, let us do it. You know, there's nobody here, nobody home. So we, we need, this is important work. It needs to be done. We have an organization willing to do it. Please give us permission to, to do that.
Okay, thanks. Um. So, uh, we have another question from David. Are there any protections for veteran graves on private property?
Protections, meaning, I don't know if it's possible to ask exactly. I mean, obviously no- nothing can be legally. Uh, damaged or destroyed. Um, the, by the way, I should have mentioned in the connection with ownership. All owners said, ownership of cemeteries and of, and of lots within cemeteries that people, that individuals may have purchased or just used. Irrespective of whether they ever paid for them or purchased them. They're all subject to regulation as we know. And for example, they, they can be, you know, the municipality can decide we're going to move it. You know, I mean, it can, there can be lawsuits obviously over this, but within my. I didn't know it at the time, but when I was in law school in Carlisle, there was. An historic African American cemetery and the. Uh, Carlisle Borough or whatever the entity is called town. Built a playground on it. And. And fi- finally, but after the damage was done, someone made a fuss. The point of the story is, 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 is to say that even ownership. Doesn't immunize, doesn't protect you forever against all forces. Municipalities and government, you know, just the way another property could be condemned for a public use. But there at least there's a procedure and there's compensation paid to the person losing their property. In the Carlisle case, there was nothing. There's now, I think, a plaque, uh, and some recognition of what was there, but that was simply wrong. It was terrible. And, uh. I, 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 I can't really, uh, I, I, I spun off on this tangent regarding that. But, um, I think I've answered the question.
Okay, uh, thank you. Next we have a question from Pamela. Uh, she says. I read a provision by the P A General Assembly that allows boroughs or municipalities the ability to allocate money from their budget or general funds. To maintain and or remediate abandoned cemeteries within their jurisdictions. What do you know about this and has it ever been tried?
Well, uh, that, that question got me because I, I really don't know anything about that. But if they have funds, there must be a procedure to access the funds. Uh, so I don't have any real world or even, uh, remote experience from another source about that. I'm sorry.
Now we have, uh, Tina. Lebanon Cemetery Operations Board went defunct but reassembled. The former caretaker did not turn over any records or maps, but there are still outstanding lots. They want to stop burials, but P A law said they have to honor these lot deeds. How can they do that if they don't know where these people are to be buried? Or if someone else is already in that space?
Can you read that last sentence again of the question that last?
How can they do that? Uh, so they want to stop burials, but P A law said they have to honor these lot deeds. How can they do that if they don't know where these people are to be buried or if someone else is already in that space?
Well, if there's a lot deed, presumably it's identifiable on the ground. I mean, the deed is to a specific spot. And by the way, those deeds. It, this gets into the sort of a subtlety of cement, cemeteries. I mentioned the moment ago that ownership isn't the same as ownership of your house. You have more rights in your house because there are more ways that. Different governments can affect cemeteries. There are so many interlocking. Uh, agencies with authority. We talked about the attorney general. We talked about county government. There's township government. Uh, and so there are many things. So there's a private interest, there are public interests, there are the lots within. But basically when you have a lot in a cemetery, you don't really, you, what you have is the right to bury somewhere and the right of access to it. But you can't, all you can do, it's a very limited right. It's really almost more like what we described as an easement, which is you, you have a right to go there. But you don't really own it in the way we may think of ownership and other things. It's not like your car. You know, where you can exclude people or, you know, you've got exclusive possession and nobody can take it away from you. It's, it's a little different. Um, so. Was, what was the last part of that question?
The last part of Tina's question was, um. How can they do that if they don't know where these people are to be buried or if someone else is already in the space?
Well. I, I don't see how you, it, first of all, if it's, if it's, it's a lot, it is identifiable. And if someone's in the space, that would be known. So the only. As I can envision it, the only pr- practical possibility is there is a deeded lot, no one's in it. And if, and it's, if it's still permissible to bury, uh, a person in that cemetery, then, then a deed. To use it for that purpose should be respected. Um, it may usually the, it's the cemetery association that runs the cemetery. As I said, the lot owners, they do have a lot, but in the end, the person who controls the cemetery. And, you know, when burials will occur and so forth is the association. So you have to look to the association. I don't think under any stretch of the imagination is. The use of an already used lot, you know, in other words, a second burial in the same place. Going to the countenance if there's an objection to the owner of the, you know, the owner of the interred, first interred person. So I guess, I guess I'm saying I would need a little more specificity as to how that's happening. Because it, it doesn't, uh, it, it doesn't make that much sense to me how it could happen where there's a spec- a specific deed to the lot. Which is going to be known. It's going to be identified by a number or a location or something. So it's hard to see how other than by mistake, that could happen, that there'd be a double use. Or, uh, that they wouldn't know where, where that lot is. That's the best I can do.
All right. Um, I think we have two more here. Uh, so from Rachel Carey Williams, we have, what if the state of Pennsylvania has facilities on the cemetery? As in the case of the Harris Free Cemetery in Harrisburg.
What if the state has facility?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the question doesn't ask what kind of facilities it is, but if the state owns it, that would, or. Uh, has an easement for that purpose, then it should have access to the property it has an interest in, either by easement. Or by carve-out, if that's the case, it's in, it's located within the cemetery. Maybe there's a separate. Deed within the cemetery in favor of the Commonwealth or it's hard to, I don't want to face, imagine. It's possible that the Commonwealth constructed whatever it is there with the consent of an owner at some point. If it didn't, I don't know how else it would be there. I did, it's possible, is it possible that, I'm assuming the cemetery predates the Commonwealth facility. But the Commonwealth would have, having built something there, unless it's very claim of ownership is challenged. Hard to imagine that happening, but it's possible. Then you have to allow the Commonwealth access to the facility so that that facility can achieve its purposes. I mean, even if it's just a water fountain and or a restroom or something like that. It's there, it, it's not impossible that it was legally put there, but it's hard to imagine in light of the. Procedures that the Commonwealth has to erect anything on any piece of land. They, they would want the landowner's consent. Maybe by purchase.
In this case, then the landowner was the descendants of John Harris. You're like in Harrisburg.
Right. Uh, well, the descendant could be the next generation or it could mean 20 generations.
Yeah.
Uh, was it, so was there a question in this case as to how the Commonwealth got to build whatever it built there?
I, it seems like, uh, she submitted, they wrote a, they made a pen dot building and parking lot on top of the cemetery. And I guess. I'm not sure if the question is if there should be any right to claim of the cemetery's descendants. Since the cemetery was sold by the, the Harris family, um, who wasn't buried there, but rather I guess the people they had enslaved. Um, she wants to know how you reclaim the cemetery.
Yeah, I, that's a, thank you for that clarification. Right. So this is, we were describing a historic injustice. A huge injustice. In other words, it's, it's, it's Carlisle paving over essentially. Uh, somebody's grave or more than one grave. And I don't have an easy answer to how to rectify that. Or who would be the party? Uh, certainly the aggrieved parties are the descendants of the people buried. Whose graves were defaced or destroyed by that action. Whether there's a remedy at this point against the Commonwealth for what it may have done. It's not stated in the question how many years ago. Yeah, I, I don't have a ready answer to that. I really have to take time to think about that.
That question worth, more thought for sure. Um, we have one more, one more question here. Um, so this is from, um, someone from North Carolina. It looks like Straby Congregational Church. Uh, Straby Congregational Church School and Cemetery Cultural Heritage Site. Um, and they want to know, can you explain quiet deeds?
Well, maybe, uh, so I'm not familiar with that phrase. And as I mentioned at the outset, states, you know, this, this talk is, we're talking about Pennsylvania law. So it's entirely possible that there are different procedures and different names for things in different states. Having said that. I am familiar with the concept of what's called an action to quiet title. And that is a legal action recognized in Pennsylvania. And and if and if it's just a coincidence of the word quiet appears in the question of what I'm about to describe and what I. About to describe is nothing to do with what the questioner intended. My apologies in advance. But. Quiet title action is brought when there's some question as to who the owner is. And to resolve those questions, a person who's claiming to be the title owner, meaning. Entitled to the deed or, you know, to be the legal. Brings an act. In which. He's asking the court to say, yes, you're the owner and he's, of course, the moving party has the burden of proving. Why that should is, that should be the conclusion. And it's called quiet title because you're basically quieting objections to your claim of ownership. You're saying, yeah, there are all these other people making these claims, but none of those claims have any merit. Only my claim has merit. So how you would prove that, very fact sensitive, depends on. What exactly the circumstances are whereby you could prove. It really is mine and and all these competing claims should be dismissed or, you know, legally not recognized. So perhaps the word quiet in the quiet title action refers to get. You win getting a quiet or quiet title, meaning. Objectors quiet down. It's really this person who owns it. By court declaration.
Okay. This is Bertha. Uh, Jenny, do we have any other questions?
Uh, that was all that I saw, so thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Dan, thank you, thank you very much. This was a a very interesting topic. If if by no other measure, just by the fact of the number of people who signed up to see this. Uh, we had an extremely, extremely large crowd, uh, uh, for us. And we are very, very thankful that you were able to say yes and to provide this important information. Um, so now I think we're going to go ahead and conclude and, um. Crystal, do you have any other closing words?
Uh, we do have our president on tonight.
Yes, yes, thank you. Barbara Boxfield.
Well, thank you. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for, uh, spending some time and listening in on this. Um, marvelous program. I'm sure that Dan has been able to, uh, give you, uh. Some well needed, more useful information than you had yesterday. And hopefully it's something that not only that you can use, but you can also share with everybody else. Please let them know that the Pennsylvania Hollow Grounds is truly trying to make sure that we are helping our stewards that are that are out there. As well as making sure that we are taking care of these beautiful historic cemeteries. And it doesn't matter what type of cemetery it is. We are just trying to make sure that we're protecting and preserving. And using our cemeteries for educational purposes. So, you know, no matter what you do above ground, underground, we're all the same. You know, it's called dirt put on top of you. So let's make sure that we work together, have great teamwork, have good, um. Connections between each other and let's have continued conversations, you know, because that's the only way we're going to work this out. So. Have a wonderful day. Again, thank you. We're going to be doing, um, Earth Day in April. We're going to have, uh, ask people to unify, unite with us as far as trying to get the information out. How can you get? Uh, volunteers to come to your cemeteries? How are you going to get some help? Maybe do some fundraising, whatever. And we're going to be targeting Earth Day, uh, in April. You'll be seeing announcements about that if you haven't already seen that. To make sure that on that particular day, all the cemeteries across Pennsylvania and obviously we're reaching out beyond the borders here. To, um, you know, participate and having the volunteers come and help you at your particular cemetery. As that happens, we'll be asking for more information on your cemetery and how they can contact you, how they can sign up. And also how you can continue with that volunteerism in your area, okay? If you have questions, reach out to us. Uh, Dan will probably. Uh, add some more notes to, uh, the, you know, the discussion into your questions. So feel free to, uh, send us a note and let us know how you felt about this particular session also, okay? Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Have a blessed night.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Signing off, everybody.
Thank you, it was excellent.
Oops. Steve, you're on mute.
Steve, you're talking on mute.
I was gonna say Janet Baldwin. If I saw that you missed part of the presentation. And if you wanted to, um, just put your, um, email in the chat.
Okay.
I can send you that information right after the this meeting.
Oh, that would be excellent. Oh, let me see, let me get chatter ruining here. Okay.
One doesn't want to leave. Website and our Facebook for more things to come, everyone.
Okay, I'm having trouble getting it to open.
I have your email in our registration.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. Have a good evening.
All right. Bye, everybody.
Crystal, Bertha, anything, any last?
No, we are good to go.
Okay, good night then.
All right, we'll gather up again soon, okay, folks?